Is it me?
Mimi, can you hear me? Okay, just a quick thing, are all the planning board members there? I can't hear you, though. I think you're muted. Mimi's, you're muted.
I'm muted. Yes, we're all here.
Okay, there was just one request from Bridget that Debbie and Andrew just speak up. They speak a little quietly and it's hard to hear them when they're speaking.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And if anybody's speaking to the board, if they can come up to the desk and speak closer. All right, thank you. Um, I, excuse me, we can't, I can't hear you, Mimi, so I'm assuming that the attendees can't either. Yeah.
You hear us now?
I can hear you now. Bridget, can you hear us now?
In the Owl Labs video. It's Mimi's video on her computer.
Yes, okay. Bridget and I can hear you, which means the attendees can hear you as well. Okay, sorry about that.
Owl Labs video is in on, so it doesn't show, it doesn't project any of us.
You're good at this stuff, you should be a tech. We're trying to get the Owl Labs video on, but while we're trying to do that, I just wanted to apologize. I realize that today is Rosh Hashanah, and I want to apologize that we're having a meeting today on Rosh Hashanah. We will try to move quickly through this agenda and not make any decisions other than those that are required.
Um, we can't hear you again. We can't hear you anymore.
How about now?
Now we can. And I'm, and you haven't called a meeting to order yet, right? Not yet.
I have.
Okay, because it didn't, it didn't, okay, we didn't hear that. Okay.
Planning board is now in session.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
And I apologize for the meeting on Rosh Hashanah, and that we'll try and move through quickly. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing, 250 Turnpike Road, Change of Use Storage Facility. You want to update us, Karina?
Yes. Okay, and now we can see the owl as well, and we can hear everybody, just for the record. So, um, the last meeting for this, the last public hearing for this project was on September 12th, at which time an extension was granted to continue the public hearing to September 26th. And the planning board action deadline to September 30th. In the interim, we received comments from Conservation Agent on the prior submission of the plans and updated documents. We also received Fussin' O'Neil review comments of submission number two. Then we received an email from the Conservation Agent regarding feedback on the drainage and the wetlands. Then we also received an email from the applicant requesting that, an extension again, as their deadline was shortly after this meeting, so they asked to be continued to this October 17th. And with an action deadline of Hold on a second, I have it right here.
Wait, first?
Yes, the 21st, sorry about that. I have it right here, small area. So, um, the reason they asked is, um, we asked that the board continue the hearing without taking testimony and to resume on October 17th. We continue to work on engineering for potential structures, what is now in the eastern parking lot. So, just a heads up that they were contemplating adding some storage bays in the larger parking lot. Last I spoke to them, and it looks like it's confirmed from their extension request here. So, one thing I just want to point out, if the planning board wants me to contact, reach out to them and let them know that, you know, these continuous continuations are not a good idea if they're still not working, you know, they don't have a design that they want to move forward with. I also know that they're working on the drainage aspects with conservation, so that may be another issue that they're working on, but just a heads up. So, Colleen has an extension request there. And that's all I have from them at this point.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to extend the deadline first?
Okay, just move forward. I make a motion that we grant the extension requested by 250 Turnpike Road, South Borough, to extend the public hearing or make the approval extension until October 21st, 2022, as requested by you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
No, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lee, yes. Mary, yes.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing for 250 Turnpike Road, Change of Use Storage Facility, major site plan approval to October 17th, 2022, at 7:05 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
No, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lee, yes. Mary, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, warrant article tree protection bylaw. Do you want me to take this, Karina, or do you have?
Sure. Um, we, just quickly, that we did, the planning staff did supply the town administrator and select board with a version to go to print. So, Mimi, you can take it from there.
Okay, um, the tree protection bylaw, just for anyone who's missed it thus far, is to protect the public shade trees in the public right-of-way. It's not for any private trees at all, and it brings master and a law, chapter 87 and chapter 48, section 15C, closer to home, and provides a clear path for the town to comply with the master laws. I'd also like to say that at their advisory committee's meeting on September 24th, they did vote to support this warrant article. Any else? Mr. Mills?
Lloyd, great job. Thank you.
Anybody in the public have any comments on public shade tree?
We have currently eight attendees, including the recording clerk. No hands raised.
Chair, I make a motion, we continue the public hearing for warrant article, tree protection bylaw, section 153, to October 13th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
No, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lee, yes. Mary, yes. Very good.
Oh. We are too fast for the next public hearing. Should we approve minutes?
Make a motion to approve minutes from August 1st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
No, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lee, yes. Mary, yes.
Make a motion, we approve minutes from August 4th, 2022.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
No, yes. Stein, yes?
Lee, yes. Mary, yes.
Does that have any edits up there? Chair, I make motion to approve minutes for both August 9th, 2022, and August 22nd, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
No, yes. Stein, yes?
Lee, yes. Mary, yes.
I'd just like to point out that, um, we do have the September 1st minutes ready, however, we didn't have them on the agenda. So, we'll push them to the next meeting, October 13th.
We're waiting for it to charge those 715. Well, not early, actually.
What, what, what item are you here to listen to?
The one regarding Parkerville, who, nine? Yes, they just continued it, it's not, they're not coming tonight. Because I'm glad we didn't miss the whole.
Well, no, the applicant asked to extend it because they weren't ready.
Oh, I thought they were going to be ready.
We did too.
We did too.
Was there any help coming?
No, there was nothing. All we did was extend it to October.
October 17th? Well, thank you for saving me my time.
Yeah, no.
I really appreciate it. Right, that's, were there people here before now?
No.
We, we didn't realize it was Rosh Hashanah, so that was part of our apology, too.
Yeah, we should be. I will tell you, it should be. I would totally agree. Not chastising you, but
Yeah.
No one would have a meeting on Christmas.
So, we kicked off the meeting by stating our apologies for that, and we're not making any decisions. We're just, but we had to still be an extended public hearing.
I so appreciate it. We're looking forward to October 17th. It is a week after indigenous people's day.
Yes.
Yes.
One mistake.
Yes. I have a hearing on Tuesday. Okay. Now, 716, so we're safe for the next public hearing. A warrant article, scenic roads. Anything on this, Karina?
Let me take a quick peek. I'll just reiterate what you said, that the advisory met on this warrant article as well, and they voted in favor of the scenic road warrant article. And I believe, Mimi, I mean, Mimi might have something to add about reaching out to the other committees and boards.
Thank you. Today I sent an email, long overdue, just with my schedule, to the historic commission and to the Conservation Commission, letting them know that the planning board had supported my recommendation to proceed with the warrant for our article that we submitted. And for those who may just be tuning in, the scenic road article is a article for special town meeting, article number two, warrant article number two, that is requesting the town to improve 68 streets to scenic status. And the long and short of it is that it's, the word scenic is not defined by Mass General Law. So, the town of South Borough has pretty much defined it meaning protected. It's a protected street, protected trees and protected stone walls. So, it is not in the true Merriam-Webster dictionary, a picturesque, you know, beautiful landscape ducolic. It is really meant to be, and put a protection on our right-of-way trees and right-of-way stone walls. And so, I have not heard back from them. I just sent them a note, and I said that they are still open to co-presenting that article or co-sponsoring that article. And we're certainly knowledgeable to that. Thank you very much for all your comments. Anybody else?
We have eight attendees, including the recording clerk, no hands raised. And also, that warrant article, as was discussed in prior meetings, was sent to the town administrator and select board for printing in the warrant.
Chair, I make a motion to continue the warrant article for scenic roads to continue to October 13th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
No, yes.
Stein, yes?
Lee, yes. Mary, yes.
Okay. Very good. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 154 Turnpike Road, Site Compliance, Scenic Road Tree Removal. Karina, you want to bring us up to date on this?
Sure. So, a few meetings back, the planning board had Justin De Petri and Bill De Petri, I believe, had both attended a meeting in which they were asked about non-compliance issues at 154 Turnpike related to activities that were taking place with the change of landscaping. The cutting down of a tree on what appears to be on Breakneck Hill Road. Changes to the lighting fixtures, et cetera. And at that meeting, the planning board asked Justin De Petri, representing Capoglu Properties, to provide feedback and information on several of the items, which included submitting a landscape plan to be compared to the original approved plan that was in the approved site plan set from years ago. With a table comparing what was being proposed for changes at the site now, and what has been changed for landscaping, including trees and shrubs and grasses. The discussion about the existing or the conditioned six-foot high fence that was supposed to be on the southern perimeter, and what was installed was three panels at the northeast corner, just north of the, just south of the driveway, the southeast corner. And the discussion that if they planted a traditional buffer where the non-compliant driveway had been cut a couple of years ago, that they've returned with curbing and grass, that there may be discussion of not requiring that fence to go the length of the perimeter. Also, the specifications for the LED light fixtures that replaced the old gas light-looking fixtures at the site. And then also provide a letter from a licensed surveyor that the tree, where the tree was located, if it was on private property, or if it was a scenic road, public right-of-way shade tree. So, not to belabor this, but they, Justin De Petri submitted a landscape plan with some proposed information on it that they have been working on. Also, a letter from a professional engineer as to the tree, and also some lighting specifications, all which were provided to the planning board for review. And then on Friday, we received an updated landscape plan from Justin, and to replace the one that he had provided previously. And that's, brings us to tonight. That brings us up to speed.
Okay, very good. Good evening, Mr. De Petri.
Hi, how you doing? Justin with Capital Group Properties.
So, um, where are we, Justin?
Uh, so we submitted, I mean, I don't know where you want to start with. If you want, I guess you could pull up, Karina, what was the first item on the list?
First item on the list was, um, the landscape plan to be, you'd be submitting a landscape plan to be compared to the original plan. The new plans will be stamped and have a table showing the new plant types.
Yep, so if you want to pull that up, I can review that plan.
And I think it was supposed to show a table that compared what was proposed in the original site plan, what was approved versus what you're doing now. So, you know, we have a copy of the old plan, and we have this new plan from you, but it didn't really show a table that compared the two.
Yeah, so the, the table on the left side of the submitted one has, I think, the bottom table has the zoning requirements for what's required and then what's provided. And then, yeah, he didn't, he didn't carry over that other one, but you have, you said you have that?
Well, we wanted to see a table that showed approved and what you're proposing with the species, et cetera. Because, you know, the numbers are one thing, but we have to make sure we understand the types and sizes as well, Justin.
Okay.
And I'll let, you know, the planning board members can speak more to that, but that's what I was expecting. And if you look, um, because the, the, the new landscape plan, if it was similar, it would become the plan of record. So, I had asked for an exhibit plan showing proposed landscaping, trees and shrubs superimposed over the approved landscape plan, where the plant material is matching the table of the approved landscaping plan. So that it was easier for the planning board to look at both and not have to research themselves and go back and forth and see what's what.
Yep, we, I can have him add that, done.
Okay.
So, you, you want to skip the plan, then?
Well, there may be some more questions on this right now already, that would be helpful for you.
Yeah.
So, I'll let Mimi take the floor.
We're just starting the landscaping.
Yeah.
Have any more trees been put in?
No. No, no, no other landscaping had been done since the original meeting. I believe the following day after that meeting, they were on-site doing more plantings, but we had stopped them that day.
Would curb and raise in the back where they were driving through?
No, no, we have, we have, we haven't done anything over there since the, the original meeting, but curb was already agreed on that that'd be going back in as soon as we're going over there to do whatever is required.
Thank you, Justin, for your presentation.
Mr. Stein?
Hey, Karina, can you hear me?
I can.
Uh, so I'm just curious, from your perspective, where we are process-wise. This seems like we're in a discussion about this plan to sort of assist the proponent prior to them submitting for an actual modification request? Is that where, is that something that, is that, is that the goal, so to speak?
Well, the first thing we wanted to determine was what they've changed, a clear picture of what they've changed and what they're proposing to continue to change, and change mean maybe replace, what they took out and what they are replacing it with. So, we have an understanding if there was a change or not. So, we're still at that point.
So, I, I might be mistaken, but I, I feel like in my experience, this type of situation, we usually request an actual modification.
Yes, that, that, that may ultimately be where this takes, where the proponent has to take this as a requirement. But we first wanted to see on a plan what they had proposed, because if there wasn't a change, if they were just replacing in-kind, et cetera, then it would kind of be a wash. But if they're changing by, and for example, it is clear by this current proposed landscaping plan that there, the, the quantity is not the same as what was approved. So, already that would be an issue. So, this was kind of step one, and I know it's been taken a little bit longer, but step one was to determine what is going on there. What have they done? What are they changing? And what do they plan to change? And if that change was falls under the code that requires a modification, then they would have to come in for a modification.
In a, in a reduction, a landscaping does require modification.
Correct. So, it's pretty clear to everybody that, I mean, this discussion in no way is an endorsement of this plan, by this word. That's all. Thank you.
Correct. That's correct.
Mrs. Sullivan, I have no comment. Mrs. Martin, I have no comment. I will just say, so the, the superimposed plan is very difficult to understand, Justin.
Yeah.
I did look at the old plan, and it seems very clear to me that there's been a marked decrease in the plant material. Like, on the new plan, it shows 32 trees. On the old plan, there were 79. On the new plan, there are zero shrubs. On the old one, there are 136. Perennials and ground cover, the new plan shows 172. In the old plan was, the old proof plan was 550. So, it certainly appears to me, unless you can prove otherwise, that there has been a reduction in landscape, which would require a modification of the site.
Yeah, to be hon, I don't have that list in front of me, of what was on the original one, but we'll, we'll get it added to this plan. So, it's easily to compare, easier to compare. And, yep, the, uh, the, the types of plants are definitely different.
So, would it be safe to assume that maybe the, the planning board couldn't, based on this information already, instead of spending more time on another superimposed plan that's not clear, but based on this information that he, that they should submit a modification, an application for modification at this time? Or does the planning board want to wait and see a revised plan?
Certainly seems so to me from comparing the cheap ones. Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, unless, unless, Justin, you say that, you know, oh, that was a mistake, we're going to get back to the total number of plants we had before, within like a handful. Yeah, I would agree with that.
That's really is the reason I asked the question, is this feels like a modification hearing, but it isn't.
Right.
My comment is with you, not on waiting, Liam, versus.
I, I can, I will check with Bill, and I'll get back to Karina this week, if, if he's not planning on adding more stuff than doing the site plan modification.
And Justin, oh, I'm sorry, and Justin, be, understand that, because you're Um, and Justin, oh, I'm sorry. And Justin, be, understand that, um, because you're, um, having a lighting change with the spec, I'm not sure, um, if the modification would require a new photometric plan or not.
I don't know if the, what we were sent shows what we need either to judge.
Right.
Um, yeah, so the lighting plan, um, the, the specs around the lights should be in bug rating. And so what this is, is just an older version. Um, your, whoever your supplier was of the electric should be able to provide that, um, that bug rating and understand what the luminaire emission is, as well as what lights you're using and the color of the light. Because the new bylaw requires dark skies requirements and, um, and reducing the, they need more amber color. So there's just nothing on the spec sheet that you provided that can give us any of that insight.
So what, what are you looking for exactly on this, on the lighting cut sheets? So I can make sure it's on there?
Yeah, well, we need to understand the bug rating, it's E U G. Um, as well as the luminaire, the total luminaire is that it will limit, um, all of the lights combined will have a total luminaire plan. We need to show that there's no trespass, the light trespassage of from your property line with the new lighting. And then we need to know the color of the bulbs in there, the amber lighting and what the Kelvin is on those lights. Kelvin temperatures, it has to be less than three thousand.
Yep. So I know, if, I don't know if you can pull up the, um, the lighting plan that we submitted.
There's an L D D, just have in area light and then another lighting thing. I always have two light. The cut sheet and a light screen.
Yeah, I can tell you which one it is. So there were five attachments. You'll see, yeah, attachment number four, whole light plan.
Yep. So the, that's the light plan. So the there's like the individual photometrics for each of the head types is in that bottom right. So that F T is the green fixture, which is the directional light. And the five W was, um, is not a directional light, but those, so the lights that we removed, the, only those back four that show green were, um, um, had like a screen on the back to make them directional.
So you changed all the lights, correct?
Yes, correct.
So what we need to know is whether they comply with our bylaw, which is in our code. And, um, as Mrs. Sullivan and, uh, spoke to, we need to know the bug rating, the color temperature, total cycle moments and the movements per fixture.
Yeah.
Especially doesn't say anything.
So, yeah, so Justin, what I can do, if I haven't already, if you haven't received, I can send you a copy of the outdoor illumination um, rules and regulations, um, that you can give to your lighting supplier. And have him, um, give you specifications that include the requirements in, in the, in those rules and regulations.
Yeah.
There's a town code, right? There's a section in the town code that talks about outdoor illumination. You should provide him that and then also, um, the rules and regulations that are associated with that, that are referenced in this bylaw. And then he, he should understand that and then he'll be able to provide you with the right information.
Okay, yeah, if you could send me that, that'd be good. And you, so do you need a photometrics plan, like an actual photometrics plan, or you're just looking for the information?
No, it needs to be both. You have to submit a photometric plan, which the supplier usually does for you.
Yeah, yeah, they can do that for us.
Yeah, and show, you know, you want to prove that there is no light trespass off your property line. And then also that the fixtures meet the requirements in the rules and regs as far as, um, backlight, uplight and glare. Because the town is, um, very focused on dark sky initiatives and reducing blue light. Um, for environmental reasons. All right. So if you have questions on that, you can call me tomorrow or the next day and I can, um, I'll email you that information.
Yeah, if you could email me that, that'd be good.
Ask a question.
Sure.
Mr. Stone. Hi, Mr. DePietre, can you hear me?
Yep.
What are the hours of elimination?
Uh, to be honest, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I can find out from the management company.
Anything else on light?
It's important, Justin, that when you submit the, um, uh, specification sheets that indicate the bug rating, that those isometric, um, diagrams that they provide in color are provided to us in color too, so you can determine what's going on.
Okay.
Because when you send them through in black and white, you can't distinguish on the specification what's, you know, what that isometric line is.
Okay.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Okay. If not, I can clarify.
Karina, just so I'm clear, right? Because I think Justin, you own the, uh, Capital Group owns a property just to the east as well, correct?
Uh, correct.
So with the light trespass, I mean, looking at where some of these dots are on the property line between the two, we'd still be looking to see that the light doesn't trespass even onto the property that you know, to the east. Um, in case, you know, you sell or something like that, someone else gets it. So the intent would be that, that light posts that are around the parking is not trespassing into your other property as well. So that the sooner we talk about that, the better.
Yeah, and note also that if you're providing additional landscaping along the back of the lot on the south side in lieu of a perimeter fence, that you should, you should make sure that your lighting professional uh, is aware of that and that what you're showing there matches what you submit later. Because buffers and such, um, help reduce light trespass as well. So you have to make sure that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then there's one last item, Mimi, on these topics.
Tree?
The tree.
So, um, it's, uh, your contention that that, uh, tree that was removed was, um, on your property. Um, and we, so public shade trees are considered to be public property unless you can prove otherwise. So we had asked that you have a surveyor stamp a plan showing that that tree was on your property. And we received a letter from a, an engineer, which is not a surveyor, as fabulous as engineers are. Um, so to me, that is still, I still think it's a public shade tree. And your, your plans show the your property line to cut across that corner there. So it certainly seems to me that that was a, a public shade.
Yeah, we weren't able to get a surveyor to, uh, to certify a plan since they weren't able to, uh, survey the tree.
So do you see the picture of the tree that's being shown on the screen?
Yeah.
So you're saying that was on your property?
Well, it's hard to tell from the picture, but you can tell from the picture that the trunk is rotted.
Well, that regardless, um, although I will say in twenty nineteen, uh, certified arborists didn't deem that tree to be in good condition.
Mimi, did you say in good condition?
Yes. It's in part of the arborists, uh, one of the roads with the arborists evaluating the public shade trees. So I guess we're back at the same place unless you can prove otherwise that it was removal of a public shade tree.
I mean, so the tree's gone, so I guess it's, if we can't prove that it was on our property, I guess what do you, what is the town looking to be done in its place? Because we can't bring the tree back.
That, that would be a, uh, a discussion of what the board wants to do for mitigation. Mr. Stone. Anything on the tree?
I, I, I agree with what you said. I mean, it looks pretty clear that it's way upon the corner there and the Y C here on the the map, it shows the property line. Pretty clear that was on the, uh, right away, so. Being, um, rushed out and everything, I don't know.
Oh, no, no.
So, I agree with you.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Stone?
I concur with, uh, Mr. Stone and the chair. We'll have to, uh, ball our options, I suppose. It's very disappointing and, uh, we like, uh, working with people who, uh, you know, honor the systems and the processes that are in place.
Yeah, so absent a licensed surveyor certification that it was on private property, um, I would also deem this to be, um, public right of way. And I agree with Mr. Science's position that the public shade tree is protected by Mass General Law regardless of this, whatever person might have thought it was not, um, healthy. It needed to go through a process and there was a problem in this town. Um, so my only comment.
I would just add that public shade trees are for everybody's enjoyment. And actually, we received a, I received a, um, a call, um, when the tree came down from a concerned neighbor who very much enjoyed this tree. So it might have been ailing or dying or something, but, um, it's just goes to show you public shade trees are really for the public. Um, so I see that there's two things happening here. So there's a compliance matter and there's a modification. And, um, I'd like to take the paper.
So does that mean, um, should Justin anticipate that he needs to provide an application for a scenic road tree removal?
Yes.
For a tree that's already been removed?
Yeah. And then we can, uh, apply mitigation.
It's a process to also ensure some kind of mitigation. And then for the record, um, a tree, a consolidated tree hearing will have been held and then, um, can be determined, you know, how, how to mitigate, whether it's, um, a tree donated or, um, a tree planted somewhere else.
If we, we have no problem, uh, offering to do whatever the board wants as far as planting additional trees, whether on the street or somewhere else in the town, if that's able to be decided without the application, but if not, then we will submit it.
Yeah, I think the proper process is to, um, submit the application. Okay. So I think.
Justin, we can give you guidance on that. If you call, the planning office will provide you insight into the application. Um, I think you're working on another location as well, so you should be a little bit up to speed on that.
Yeah.
It's the, so should we be looking forward to the submission of modification application also?
Are you asking Justin, right?
Yes, Mr. DePietre.
Yeah, could, could you repeat that again?
That should we be looking forward to the submission of a site plan modification application?
As far as for the tree being removed or for the, the other landscaping items?
Yeah, for the site plan, the other landscape items.
Lighting.
And the lighting.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna check with, uh, Bill and I'll let Karina know this week.
Okay. Because you are out of compliance with the site, with an approved site plan. So you don't want to let that go too long.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. DePietre.
Yep.
And the next item on the agenda is a discussion of forty B residents at Park Central. Want to update us, Karina?
Yes, let me just grab my folder. Sorry, I have to get it off the floor. I'm sorry. And I'll just be brief because Marnie, um, um, may have some more insight to this, but, um, so the planning board compiled, um, a letter, um, with Marnie spearheading it with Mimi to provide, um, comments back to the Mass Housing Finance Agency, uh, regarding the residents at Park Central forty B application to that agency, uh, which is a precursor, um, before they come to the, uh, zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit in town. So, um, a letter was compiled and we emailed it to Mr. Busby at the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency, as well as mailed him a hard copy. And just an FYI, the select board also provided a comment letter by the deadline of September twenty-second. And, um, I'm aware of a comment letter from, um, the buddy's attorney, a butter's attorney, David Hill, that also provided a comment letter. Uh, there may be others, but those are the two, other than the planning board that I'm aware of. And it was a very comprehensive letter and that's what we have.
Yes, and I'd like to thank Mrs. Sullivan, who did a fabulous job, was a very comprehensive letter. Anyone else have anything?
I appreciate your work on it.
Very good. Thank you. On to the next discussion item. Thayo Hall, forty dash forty-two Central Street.
So not a lot new to speak to this. Um, I still need to respond to Michael Wei Shan. He had some questions regarding, um, uh, a new, uh, major site plan approval and permits required with that. Uh, so I'll be responding to him and when I do, I will forward that email to the planning board members. And we can carry this discussion on to the next meeting as well, uh, with update. Basically, we're, um, you know, we would be expecting a, a, a new set of site plans to be approved if there's a change of use or any changes to the site for, um, uh, what they're proposing by the South Borough Historical Society.
To be clear, there is no site plan currently.
No, there is not. The, the antique, the auction house and antique, the ant, antique auction house and fine art gallery, you, um, major site plant lapsed already. And the, um, there was another permit along with that. Uh, it was either the, it was the adaptive reuse of historic building that would be lapsing in December because it's a special permit.
Anybody, Mr. Stone?
Hi, Karina.
Yes.
I, the, uh, Dropbox folder for this agenda item seems to be empty. And, uh, there's nothing in any of the hard copies in front of us about this item. Is there a final, uh, conservation restriction? Was that, pardon my not following this through the select board, but not mistaken, this was an agenda item with the select board. And they, maybe is there, would it be possible, are you aware of where that stands and?
Yes, it's my understanding that the select board, um, rescinded their first right of refusal to purchase Fayetteville Hall, which is forty to forty-two Central. rescinded their first right of refusal to purchase Fayville Hall, which is forty to forty-two Central Street, which meant that it's my understanding that would be conveyed from John Deli Piscoli, the current owner, who purchased the property through a, a response to an RFP when the town was looking to sell the property. And he ended up being the one who purchased it. And now he would be conveying this to the Historical Society in which they intend to do with him. Yeah.
All right. Was that conditional on a conservation restriction?
I'll have to look. I don't know. I don't, I think Mimi attended that meeting and she may have further input to that, but I don't think there were any conditions.
That's correct. No conditions. They were listed right of course.
Our letter had, I think it suggested a CR.
Or a preservation certification. Yes.
Yes, among, among other, other suggestions as well.
Thank you.
Okay. The next discussion item, scenic road, stone wall removal, School Street, St. Mark's Street.
I'm happy to say that a letter was submitted to the select board. Not happy because of the context or the content of the, I'm happy because I was able to complete that task finally. So on, I drafted a letter based on the planning board's input regarding the St. Mark's Street scenic stone wall in which there was also the question of scenic tree removal at St. Mark's intersection with Marlborough, adjacent to the library. In, in addition, the letter also addressed a stone wall that was impacted by the Main Street Reconstruction Project, but also did not follow formal process through the planning board for a scenic stone wall removal application and public hearing per Mass General Law. So a letter was drafted and submitted to the town administrator. The, the select board was the, the people that it was addressed to. Karen Galligan was on the list. Chris Leroy, the tree warden designee. Margaret Landry, the chair of the St. Mark's Street Parking Park Working Group and also Robert Kukulitz, he's the chief financial operation officer at St. Mark's School. I did receive feedback from Margaret Landry, the chair of the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group, that she was going to bring this up at their last meeting. And I'm not sure when that meeting was. Let me see here what she said. But she was forwarding that information to those committee members and was going to, they were going to discuss it at their meeting. So that's where that stands.
It was last Wednesday or Thursday.
Right. Yeah. So that is the only group that I've had feedback from. Or that's the only person I've had feedback from so far and that was that they were going to, they were thankful for the letter and that they were going to discuss it. So hopefully waiting to hear back. Or if it's on an agenda for the select board. Some upcoming select board meeting. We'll have to wait and see.
So can I ask a process question? Sure. Well, we just asked, Mr. De Petrie, put in an application on a tree that was removed, that was a public shade tree. Can we start the process, similar process on the public shade trees that were removed in St. Mark's Street? That was the question in the letter, wasn't it?
Yes, the, in, the letter ended with the planning board also respectfully requests that the application for scenic road, stone wall or tree removal will be appropriately submitted in a timely manner within the next month so that the proper process is adhered to and completed. And that was dated September 19th was the letter. It was emailed probably a day or, you know, a day after, day or two after.
I have it, Karina, I'm sorry. And it is a very well-written letter. So are we expecting the planning of the select board to provide a letter or application for the DPW will submit an application? I think the tree warden doesn't make the same process that the other tree removals go through.
So what's happened in the past when there's a tree and a stone wall from previously is there would be a consolidated public hearing for the tree removal, but also since that's at the select board meeting that the planning board members who attend that as part of the forum would also vote on the stone wall removal at the same time, even though the stone wall is not under select board jurisdiction on a scenic road. As far as an application is concerned, and I believe I outlined that in the letter. That the planning board was anticipating requiring some form of mitigation for the subject stone walls and trees, be it replacement in the case of St. Mark's Street or repair of the stone wall surface in the case of School Street. And we said that the planning board respectfully requested the select board as tree warden provide an application for the scenic stone wall and tree removal. At, removed at the two subject locations. So in the letter, we did ask the select board to submit, which they would likely have their tree warden designate, as Mimi mentioned. Would prepare an application and submit that formally and then we would follow the process in the flow chart that we've been using for how to handle removal of scenic road trees.
Next discussion item, Davis Road Island Removal.
So previously the planning board had asked me also to draft a letter to the select board regarding the proposed median island removal. On Davis Lane, which was part of Southborough Estates back in the early nineties. So Davis Road and Ashley Road were accepted as public roads in 1993. They were part of Southborough Estate subdivision approved in October of 1986. The conditions of approval included a median island along Davis Road to mitigate for the length of the dead end cul-de-sac roadway that was proposed. So when we found out that there was potential for the DPW to remove, potentially remove this island, it, it, you know, generated several concerns. One is that there are hydrants in the median island. There are public shade trees in the island. And there could be potentially drainage impacts because you'd be taking out an pervious portion of what was designed and making it impervious. There was a very conceptual layout provided by the DPW that I believe the H B prepared in March of this year, which kind of laid out removing the island. So it's my understanding that according to John Butler, who's a resident on Davis Road, that, you know, some, I don't know how many, but many of the residents were in favor of removing the island and the DPW felt that if they were repaving the road because it was on a list to be repaved, that the island could be removed. However, in talking to town council during office hours, he suggested that the proper process would be a modification to a subdivision that who is ever proposing that that island come out should submit an application to do so to the planning board for a modification. It is my understanding that the island is maintained by the residents of Davis Road as part of a homeowners association, but there's the question of who owns the median. And that's something that town council said he, he couldn't really speak to without further research. So there is a declaration of restricted covenant that explains the homeowners maintain that piece of, the, the island itself. So the letter ended saying that, you know, should the proposed repaving of Davis Road include the removal of the median island, the planning board will require and expects an application for a modification amendment to a definitive subdivision, including engineered stamped plans of the proposed modification. Because of those factors, the hydrants would have to be relocated and the fire chief is not against them being moved and removing the island, but he would want them to be moved to one side of the roadway. And that, again, the drainage aspects would also have to be, you know, verified that it's not impacting any drainage down the street, causing any problems during the winter or during rainstorms. So let's see what else I wrote. I reached out to Karen Galligan previously prior to the last meeting even and on, and she indicated that it made sense that there needs to be a proper process. So in ending, the planning board respectfully requests that the select board instruct the DPW superintendent to submit the required application and that the planning board approval of the modification amendment to a definitive subdivision be obtained prior to any work being, to the work being performed, meaning the island removal. So they should have that permit process. They should apply for it and go through the process before they move on any construction. And again, that was sent to Mark Purple, Karen Galligan and the fire chief as well as the select board. So sorry, one long sentence again.
All right, Karina, thanks for the update. Much appreciated. A lot of work went into that. So thank you. Just wondering, did you get a sense if there was going to be an application or if?
Well, I, I, I've heard conflicting things. So according to one source, the Davis Road was no longer going to be repaved in the very near future. And then in another source said that yes, it's still on the list to be repaved. So.
Did Karen reply, okay, I'll put in an application or has anyone said they still want to go forward with this?
No, there's, there's, I've not gotten feedback on this other than the fire chief saying he would be okay with the island removed as long as the hydrants are relocated to where he needs them to be. And then Karen saying that it makes sense that there needs to be a public process. But there is word of some new software that will determine ranking of what gets paved and not taking the decision of what streets get paved out of Karen's purview that the software would generate that, but there's still a question as, you know, who would apply, who would pay? You know, and when?
When you say pay, are you talking about paying for moving the fire hydrants or paying for just the design or all of it?
Well, I think all of it because it is, if, if the town is applying because they have funding for the repaving and the repaving estimate includes removal of the island, then that's great. But if the repaving estimate that they got back from the bids they put out does not include island removal, then there's a cost associated with that.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, typically we don't get into costs. But in this case, I don't know how we can't ask that question because if we approve it, it's the taxpayers, if it's the town doing this. You know, so I think we just be obligated to find out how much this is going to cost so at least get air to everyone. They know the town pain.
Well, I think when you get a, when you get a proper engineered design, that that's kind of part of that process that, you know, an engineer lays it out and then tells you what it's going to cost to do it. Whether it's the town or the residents, that's not clear. You know, I think that's probably something town council needs to be a part of the discussion.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Karina. It's, it's my understanding that, that, that Davis Road capital planning looked, looked at all the roads, had a meeting with Karen, looked at all the roads that were submitted for paving and that they, that this was not on the final list for 2024.
Yeah, I heard that as well. I just don't have anything concrete, like saying that's really okay, you know, I mean, it might have been at a meeting. So if it's in meeting minutes, we can always look that up.
Very good. And the next discussion item. Ken's Foods Noise Barrier Study Final Report and Recommendations.
Okay, sorry. You're talking to me, right?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. So when the planning board approved the major site plan and low impact development special permit for three twenty-five turn by Ken's Foods for the building expansion on the east side. Part of the decision included some mitigation for the noise that was being impacting the residents of the neighborhood surrounding the facility. And in the decision, there, part of the decision, there was a concept noise barrier wall that was proposed, but needed to be further researched and finalized as to what method of noise barrier wall would be the best approach. So the Ken's Foods noise expert and the Butters had a noise expert. And they worked together and with the Board of Health to determine what would be the best approach to move forward with a noise barrier wall. So there was a shortened wall which was closer to the building. There was a longer wall that was proposed along the western perimeter and around the north corner, which was impacting potentially the wetland resource areas. And then there was a wall that was fell kind of in between those two and in the final analysis, it was determined that, that middle, I forget what, there was a specific name that they were calling it, the, the shortened perimeter wall. Yeah. There weren't names to that. And that was the one that became the option of choice. All right, and we received a email from Chelsea Malinowski, who's chair of the the Board of Health. And they provided a memo that said that was the choice. And at a Board of Health meeting on September thirteenth, 2022, the board was presented with a report that had opportunity to ask questions and weigh in on the findings. The Board of Health's vote was to endorse the short perimeter wall, subject to Conservation Commission tweaks and approval and final design. And also provided the Southborough, the Ken's Foods Noise Barrier Study, which I believe we included in the packet for tonight's meeting. So that being said, it, it's my understanding that now that there's an option that's been selected and supported in general consensus by those parties, the two noise experts and the Board of Health, that Ken's Foods will be moving forward with a progress the design of the noise barrier wall option and then come back to the planning board for a modification to the major site plan approval, which should be happening, you know, October, November, December timeframe. Which should be happening, you know, October, November, December timeframe. Depending on how they, how fast their engineers pull that design together.
Very good. Thank you. Then I'd like to thank the Board of Health for their collaboration on this very complicated process and they seem to, I'll be going in a good direction, so I try to thank them. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I just thought I'd add that I sent a follow-on letter to the Chair of Board of Health because the clarification of the verbiage they used for the approved wall wasn't actually anything referenced in the documents themselves, so I asked for clarity as to what that was. So what they referred to as a shortened perimeter was actually called the, the the long shortened. So my understanding was she was going to ensure that the final, the final tweaks to a final report, so she'll ask them to update the name of the wall that was recommended for up the motion.
Thank you for that one. Anyone else? Okay. My word, Planner's Report.
Okay, I'm going to try and do this very quickly. While we're talking about Ken's as a project update, there were three drainage repairs that needed to be done before they can proceed to do landscaping fixes and then also before they can move forward with the building expansion itself. They've completed two of the three. Fussen O'Neill was at the site to inspect the installation at different times. So the outlet control structures were repaired and fixed. The lingering drainage issue is the gravity drainage line that they had constructed over a gas line. That happens to be right next to a National Grid utility pole, whose foundation is very deep and near where they have to dig. So they are waiting for National Grid to shore up the hole, which I've been informed would be in about two weeks or so. So they're moving forward on the work that they're required to do. As far as that goes, then. Today, I was able to have our new recording clerk, Bridget Marley Rubin, who is currently an attendee, signed the contract to perform Planning Board Recording Clerk services under the new town's policy. So I have that contract. But in order to process it, I would need the Planning Board to just accept that in a vote, that Bridget accept the contract for Bridget being the Recording Clerk for the Planning Board. She's already done four or five meeting minutes for us, many of which you approved earlier at the meeting today. So I just need, in order for, to get processed properly, contracts often go to the Select Board, but because Planning Board is an elected board, Planning Board has to accept the contract.
Very good. Motion to accept the contract for the Reporting Secretary.
So seconded.
A motion in the second in this session. All in favor, Latrell? Yes?
Those yes, Stein, yes?
And yes, Mary, yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Bridget. Yes?
Yes, I just wanted to say Bridget's doing a great job, and it's were exceptional.
They were fabulous, man.
Thank you. It's a hard job.
Okay. National Grid submitted their annual vegetation management plan and hazard tree removal plan to the Select Board, as was discussed and requested previously. And I believe the Select Board, Mark Purple and Melanie, his assistant, are trying to, are planning to put that on the agenda for October third. And their Select Board meeting was moved to October third as opposed to a Tuesday, October fourth, due to a holiday. For October fourth. So be aware, we, we, we will be posting an agenda for the Planning Board, and we're just going to need a forum of at least three members to anticipate attending that meeting to satisfy the public meeting for the annual management plans for National Grid. So that's kind of just an FYI. And
So it's just a quick question that because of our the legislative acts and the Select Board are acting as the tree warden, the documents that National Grid provided, I don't know if they're new, but they list Chris Leroy as tree warden. But I believe his title is the tree warden designate. Do we ask them to update that, or are these older documents that we're looking at?
These were documents from, in early in, in March of this year. Which have been kind of going, you know, they've been here and sitting. The DPW had submitted applications with them early on when the, it wasn't quite clear what the process would be for these. So I suppose that there could be a note added during the public meeting that where they refer to Chris Leroy, it would mean tree warden designate. And that could be in the minutes or something like that.
The only concern I had, and I think there's, and I think, I believe the National Grid's forestry person that came said that there's usually a tree warden on site for the first day, and I believe that's reflected here. And so is that going to be the tree warden designate? It should just be reflected in the document, that's what's, but not just the title, but where it's referring to their role of the tree warden. It should be really clear, is it the Select Board as tree warden, or is it the designate?
And if I could ask Debbie, if you send me an email tomorrow morning just with those two things, and then I can provide that as a follow-up to the Select Board through Mark Purple and also to National Grid, so they're aware of that. So they're not kind of taken off guard when that comes up, and maybe they can submit it fresh with that change. Thanks. Okay, sorry, still waiting for me here, hold on. As you know, special town meeting's coming up on October thirteenth. So we will be Planning Board typically holds a meeting one hour before that, so that meeting's at seven PM. The Planning Board should plan, I would guess, plan on meeting at six PM at the school. Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong, is it at Trotter? It's at the Trotters, right? Yeah, so we'll be prepared for that. And Yep, that's in the works, and we'll get that information out to you. And then last thing is no, two more things. The Master Plan Implementation Committee is going to be meeting on the twenty-eighth of September for their first meeting. For Planning Board members, we have a copy of the master plan that Colleen can pass out to you. It's on the Planning Board Meeting cart in the office. That way you have a quick reference for when one of the Implementation Committee members attends a Planning Board meeting to try and spearhead and make some of those goals happen. And then the last thing is it's budget time again, so I'm going to be starting to prepare the Planning Board budget for fiscal year twenty-four. And I will follow up with Mimi, like I did with the prior Chair, Don Morris, and review that, and then I'm hoping to have something ready for October seventeenth to share with the Planning Board for that fiscal year twenty-four budget. And I think that is all that I have today. Yes.
October thirteenth, maybe for a moment?
Sure.
Logistically, I can't be there physically on October thirteenth. Will this Zoom break be in place? Should I have access to internet? So unfortunately, I won't be able to participate on that.
Well, do you think we could do a Zoom meeting, Colleen, through the laptop?
Oh, so for Army?
That's what.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that we should try to do that. I think that because the Planning Board members can meet in person, the public can meet in person. We will provide, we'll set up a Zoom meeting through the laptop, because it doesn't matter where we're sitting. Colleen, right, I think that can work.
Yeah, we'll have to link on the agenda.
Yeah.
Because there will be a couple of public hearings probably on that agenda, right?
Yes, the warrant articles will still be open and they need to be closed. So we, we would like you to be participating in those.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nope, that's it. That's what I have for today.
We did our minutes. The next meeting is the, as just mentioned, the pre-special town meeting on October thirteenth. And the meeting after that is October seventeenth. Oh, on October third? Yeah, the tree. Oh, yes, for the National Grid. Annual maintenance plan, and the Select Board also took a position on the tree protection by law at that time.
And the scenic roads warrant article. I believe Mark Purple said that in an email I passed on, that the scenic roads and the tree bylaw and the National Grid management plans are all going to be on that October third agenda.
I thought that they had supported this, because the new warrants that support by zero.
Oh, maybe they did. I just know, I just remembered him saying in an email, the two warrant articles as well. Maybe he just forgot. But just in case, I think they're, I'll clarify that tomorrow when I look at the email.
Anything from anybody else?
What's your move, Karen? Sarah?
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? Latrell, yes?
Those yes, Stein, yes?
And yes, Mary, yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Again, sorry for the meeting on Rush Show. We'll do better next year.